Yeah.
Yes, I'm just calling out.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello Carolyn. Cody sent me a text about ten to four, he won't be here.
Who?
Cody. But that's the only one I've heard from. I know Tom is back, but... And I'm not sure what all Alex is doing. He might be traffic.
What is going on out there?
They're traffic.
They're gonna, they're diamond blading it, is that what it's called? Diamond blading the surface.
At the edge of town here in.
Yep, they're working their way into town, yeah. We're gonna do three and four.
Can I get the.
This is gonna be turned into a term lane.
Have you been into, uh, Rolf?
Yeah, it's nice.
No, no.
It's nice.
Fifteen's all over.
Oh, that way, yes.
Thank you, beautiful.
And then, uh, they did the site wants to move.
Mm-hmm, that's all state.
Site wants, someone's like that. Thank you, thank you.
Did you do any damage?
No, he had his.
Or did you hear about his grandson?
He took a cable up town.
Huh?
For a library.
Who did?
Dan Allen did, with his tractor and his horse.
On Saturday?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't hear anything about it, yeah.
Yes.
No, his pink, his pink horse?
Just sit home?
Yeah.
Turn the corner, which I would.
No.
Overhead.
Oh geez.
What happened there? Snap, crackle, bop, I don't know.
They're getting ready to power wash and paint that church. The original catalog church.
The whole place is departed, less than thing. Unbelievable.
Oh damn.
What?
Can't wait for the.
Got a parking lot across the street, for heaven's sakes. Go up one?
Go up.
Anyway.
Alright. I haven't heard from Stover. How are all your minutes?
Sleep better, I think, alright.
Running wild with mom gone?
They're doing good though. No mom's very.
Do you have any going to school yet?
Yeah, they'll all three be in school or she won't hear.
Really? Even the little ones?
Yeah, for being three year olds. I also have something to do with wife and I get a nice little break, but.
I didn't mean it like that, but okay.
Jealousy later.
Nah, well, probably a little bit, yeah.
You wait till she has to go shopping for prom dresses and all the homecoming and all that.
I was in a fine mood until you started talking to her, so.
Oh!
I'm just kidding.
Yeah, all the prom dresses.
Yeah.
Trust me.
I just texted Ben, I saw he was on there. Said.
Today's the nicest day of all.
We're right there.
We have to take your trouble, paint everything stuff today. It wasn't too bad.
Ten?
We were in shape.
Uh, ten thirty-six.
Could've stayed by last week or another week. It's not, it was.
Cody's not gonna be here, so we'll just wait until. Look like I'm listening. So now, you guys can cross off B Robinson. He just let us know he's not gonna be here. I don't think so. And the seven, seven minutes you guys have already seen. Brian, you headed over to Reedland?
Uh?
Are you done going to Reedland?
Done, one more time.
One more time? Wanna take a car over there for me?
Be pretty tough pulling my trailer, but.
You look kinda funny. You probably won't be in trouble till you get away with it.
Yeah.
I still don't know how I'm gonna get that car over there. My extra.
Somebody's nightmare. Today, but. It's an act of reality.
Look a little tan there, Tom.
Were you fishing or what? I had three extra girls to see. Oh, I feel like today would be an occasion.
Call me to order. Uh, prove the agenda.
I make the motion to approve the agenda. I'll second it.
Move the same to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Sit in an opportunity to address the council?
Yes. Pardon?
Yep.
Did you call me for, you want to talk?
For me?
Yes. Sure.
My, um, my son's over.
And you are?
Diana Yelkom. Thank you. This is our, um, letter of resignation, I'd like to read it. This letter is to inform you that we as a group, Becky Dewey, Linda Sadoff, Diana Yelkom, and Carolyn Drayman are resigning effective, uh, July eighth, twenty twenty-five. This past year has been exciting for the Heinz Center. We as a board and specifically Carolyn has worked very hard to rent the center so it is utilized by the community. This, uh, has helped tremendously in keeping the center running in the black. However, we have also been undermined and disrespected. On two different occasions, Laura Holmes rented out the Heinz Center to a friend. On those two occasions, neither Carolyn, Becky, nor anyone on the board ever received a call from the friend or Laura to check if it was available. Laura rented it out without the board's knowledge. On one of those occasions, the rental check was given to Laura at City Hall and deposited in the city's account. We had to ask for a check to be issued back to the Heinz Center. Laura has also just given out the zero key, which is the master key that copies are made from. The center is to be opened and closed by someone on the board, the keys not given out. When confronted about this, we received the excuse that I'm still learning. This is not something you have to learn, this is common sense. We also request a correction in the newspaper. We did not vote to dissolve the board, ever. City Hall was never to serve as a contact for rentals, nor were the keys to be given out. We took our job seriously and we tried to do everything to promote, manage, and care for the Heinz Center in a professional way. We regret having to resign, but in a sense, we are forced to due to who undermined. And this is part with our signatures.
Anyone else speak?
Hi, I would like to discuss the urban chicken farming. Uh, allowed in Pocahontas, Iowa, I know it's been brought up before. And I know that over half of the residents in Pocahontas were for it, a lot of businesses were for it. Um, it could help with the FFA, to get kids involved. I've had the chickens for three years now. And I just looked up to see if we were allowed to have chickens, and it said that we were. So I went ahead and got chickens, I set up my coop, I cut a hole in the side of my garage for a door for them to get in and out into a smaller enclosed area. And now they want me to get rid of my chickens. So I was wondering if maybe we could discuss bringing urban chicken farming to Pocahontas since it's the only town in Pocahontas County that doesn't allow chickens.
And you said you looked it up?
Mm-hmm.
And they said we could, where did you find that at?
I just said, can you have chickens in Pocahontas, Iowa, and it said that you could, you could have up to six, no roosters.
Was this like a chat GPT thing or Google, or was this like you actually saw the code where the ordinance said you could have it?
No, I just Googled can Pocahontas County have urban Pocahontas, Iowa have chickens, and there was a bunch of different a bunch of different things that said you could. I mean, there wasn't one thing on there that said no.
I'm pretty sure it's an ordinance that said you cannot have chickens.
They will publish that again.
She's not wrong though.
If, if you Google it, it says yes, you can.
And ordinance.
Yeah, where does that come from?
Where does it come from?
Here's, well, there's several ordinances that Google's gonna pull from, um, and it's going to assume. Is it always correct? No, but also our ordinances have been pretty tough to find online before. If I have somebody from, you know, to be able to look it up on the internet, it'd be pretty difficult.
And I know I ran into that problem before, some ordinances and some of the things that we're dealing with, you know, prior. Um, and that's been something that's been noted, that we need to take care of. But if somebody were to come to City Ca- or City Hall, could they have access to it or get a copy of our ordinances if they?
And I've given it out and it says no.
Is there a way that we can get that published though, so it's a little bit clear on the city website, so?
Is there any way to discuss, like, and open it up?
If you wanna open it up, that has to be put on the agenda.
Where can I do that?
For the next meeting. Cause we can't make a motion under, really make any action on that, since it's not on the agenda.
Where do you find the agenda? I look for this meeting today on the agenda, where do you find it at?
It's posted here at City Hall, the post office, and Pocahontas State Bank.
And then Nicole's done a good job of posting it on her Facebook page too.
Thank you.
So our next meeting is August fourth, is our word?
So is our website updated frequently? Can we post it on the website, our city website? Can we make a link to post it there, since it's been? Definitely needs to be done, or is it? It seems like it's been a hot topic, so.
I can put agendas on there.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I just wanna thank you ladies for doing that, all that hard work over there.
And there is paint in there, um, we were going to try and do some painting, and I talked even more about that, about putting something up. On the sign here, that hardly, nobody even knows it's there, including myself. Um, we're gonna paint it and maybe get something that had, um, I mean, newly refinished or newly, you know, just to
Just updated.
To bring in some more business. Um, it did go really well this year with the, um, we had quite a few graduations, cause she put it up at Woods and the bank, and so we appreciate that. The, yeah, we.
We had paint for the inside and the outside.
Yes. And Diana would be interested in painting if.
Right. I mean, if the city, if some of the city guys or whoever would do that normally, I mean, I would paint, so.
That's gonna do help.
Are we still on citizens' address? I didn't have anything prepped today, um, I'm not gonna lay out a speech or anything, but um, from that discussion that just took place, I do feel the need to state some clarifications. Um, absolutely correct, we are one of the only cities within our county that you cannot just Google search the ordinances. Um, cannot Google search for agendas or minutes, Lorenz's comes up, Rolf comes up, if you type in Pocahontas, Iowa. City Pocahontas, board me minutes, board me agendas, you'll get Lorenz, you'll get Rolf, you will not find Pocahontas within the top first page. Um, I do agree that in today's day and age, you're going to find people wanting to know things via social media, via the internet before they're going to go to the post office, the bank, whatever that may be. Um, I think that's been pretty evident from the very first day I started talking of like, let's kind of come into the new age and embrace it. Um, yes, it's, there's a downside to social media, but there's also a way, like we just mentioned, to update the website, to make those things easily accessible. Um, to pay your bills online, different things like that. Um, and I also wanted to make a comment about, uh, coming into here to locate the city code. Um, I did that in January, February time, uh, because I could not find it. The only time, only thing I could find was through our Chambers website. Um, and that is from the most, the most recent time it was kind of recodified and put together, so I think it was twenty twenty, if I'm remembering correctly, twenty fifteen or twenty twenty, one of those two. Um, and so I came in asking for a physical copy of it, the most updated version, because obviously anything passed from the time that that was posted would not be in there. So any of the resolutions passed every year would not be in there. Um, and I asked for a physical copy and I actually was not provided one. Um, at that time, Laura could not find it. Um, I had to, she tried to look for it on her computer and didn't have a digital copy of it. Um, she did have a massive, like, four inch binder, um, and obviously to get that, like, copied or even faxed or sent to me electronically was gonna be a massive undertaking. Um, and I had to walk Laura through where I could find the copy on the internet through the Chambers link. Um, so to my knowledge, like, I still was never given from twenty twenty until, um, twenty twenty-four. So I have all the resolutions passed from twenty twenty-four, and then the ones that were given to us at the beginning of the year of twenty twenty-five, when we were the citizens were still giving the, getting the information and the packets and the bills that you all were getting. Um, somewhere along the line, that stopped, so I don't have any other physical copy after that. Um, but was never given the amendments or resolutions passed from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. So it is not really easy to walk in here and ask for a physical copy either. And I thought I would share that information given the statement subverbing. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No. I'm gonna put the keys, okay, and then that's all we got there.
Okay.
And your office.
And then your available bank information?
That's all in there.
Okay.
Yep.
See no other requests? Uh, prove consent agenda. Prove this minutes and the bills.
Sorry.
Prove consent, approve on the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, okay. Heinz Center Board, Connor Lizza, was, did we just have that?
Yep, we just had that.
Okay, and then moving down to public hearing for the sale of lot two, Prairie Estates.
Missed a lot of treatment.
Uh, you can't make it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, public hearing for High Point Roofing to buy lot two, he's gonna come in and close this Friday. He's already given his money down, he's buying it through the cell bar.
High Point Roofing?
Yes.
Wayne.
Wayne, okay.
Are you gonna do the armory?
He will be here this weekend to do the armory.
Just skip those for, yes.
Okay, for sale lot two.
That's what we're on. So public hearing.
What are we talking about then? I don't understand.
We're just talking about the person.
Just who it was.
I just heard High Point Roofing, so I just didn't know, like, it was a business or it was a person or lawyer.
It's a business, he's putting his disabled brother in there. And then he may work out of there when he's in the area. But he is licensed to be in Iowa, so, or, you know, bonded and everything to work, you know.
Wanna make a motion about?
To do what for the agenda?
Excuse me. I'm gonna hear.
Approve the sale.
And we're back up to lot two?
Yes.
So we need to set the public hearing?
That's set for today. It's going on right now.
Alright. We need to, uh.
Motion.
A motion for that?
I'll make a motion, so, High Point Lot number two. Second.
And we need to roll ball?
Yes.
Okay, on the public hearing for sale of lot two on Prairie Estates, Brian?
Aye.
Uh, Jonathan?
Aye.
Cody? Tom?
Aye.
Dee?
Aye.
Okay. Approve. Approving the resolution. Laura, you take this, please?
I will, okay, so the armory roof, there's pictures in here if you look back through your packet. They have a preferred renter in mind. You guys have heard of Midwest Ag, they're out of Parkersburg, they are our crop dusters. They are the ones that built the building last fall out there on the airport. So what they would take over is the one with the armory picture on it. They would take over that parking lot, the armory building, and this section of the other parking lot. Next to the garage.
You say this section, this right here?
Yes. The seven, three, two, one, blah, 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 six.
Okay.
So they, what they wanna do is get their equipment off the grass and onto the pavement. And then they want the back half of the armory for storage. But they are willing to pay for the rent for the whole armory. No water, no heat, no AC, they don't need it, they've got it in their other building. We, we just do the roof. And Denny Martin brought me a agriculture pricing list from twenty twenty-four, a survey they do, I guess. It's fifty-three cents a square foot, which for that size of building would be seven thousand, three, thirty-nine. But we are not doing the heat, the AC or the water, and they're just using the back of the building. We will have the black mold removed. And we're talking long-term lease.
So if we have all that done and there's no heat or no air conditioning?
No.
What's that building gonna look like and? Which you could, you could.
Well, I should put this out.
Yep.
Well, other than the black mold.
Yeah, besides that.
Midstates Plumbing did finally come from Fort Dodge, and he said the first thing he touches is gonna cost us fifty thousand and it's gonna go up from there.
I know, but I'm not saying no, of course, but I'm just wondering how it's gonna look and you put all that money in it, how's it gonna look in ten years?
Well, I mean, you put a new roof on it, you'll stop.
You'll save the design.
All the water damage.
Yeah.
So who cares if it's heated or cooled?
Mm-hmm. Well, what about the, is there sheetrock in there and all that stuff?
No, it's, it's concrete.
I was gonna say.
It's all cinder block.
And whatever drywall's in there.
Well, you know it better than anybody.
There's meat in there, I think.
Yeah, well, there hasn't been heat there for quite a while, so.
That's why we have the issues.
Well, the issue was the leak, so then that caused black mold and.
The water's been off from seventeen, he said for somebody to come out and turn that on, we could, we could very easily flood the building, just like that.
We have special, we have no heat?
There's only, there was only ever AC in the front half of the building, back half is blowers. The vents that are coming out of the ceiling are just air going out.
Exhausted.
Yep. The blowers that are in there, he thought were in good shape and spending, but it was getting it all hooked back up again, it would be. Cause we need all new AC, all new ductwork, all that.
So we're not giving up the south shed?
No. That, there's an estimate in your packet, it's like twelve hundred and very last page, I think, or second to last page, twelve hundred and thirty-seven dollars for Iowa Lakes to split that for us. And that's our Craig from Copag, working with Iowa Lakes to do that together. Yeah, twelve eighty-seven, sorry.
Do what now?
To split it, so the back garage has its own utility?
Oh.
From the armory, cause right now it's all on one of them.
Oh, what, you said twelve, what?
Twelve eighty-seven.
I didn't think that was too bad, I mean, I. Okay. So I've not talked to Midwest Ag, the airport commission is thinking around the three thousand mark to lease it to them for a five-year lease. They would drop it to a twelve, twenty-five hundred a month for a ten-year lease. But I need you guys to, I, I, you have to decide. Cause if it, the whole building versus that Ag survey that was done, it comes to seven thousand.
Good.
And that was just a machine shed with concrete floor. Cause really, that's all it'd be.
We'll also rent or lease them out the parking lot, yeah.
Uh-huh, yeah. Basically two parking lots.
Right.
And they like the fenced-in area, they like that their equipment would be fenced in, so they'll finally repair that fence that they took down anyway. But I don't know, does that sound like a reasonable number, Rover? I don't.
What'd you say, twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred for ten years.
But then it says.
Oh, a month or a year?
A month.
A month.
Twenty-five hundred for a month?
Uh-huh.
Sounds good. You sure it's a month?
Yeah, cause otherwise it would be seven thousand.
Twelve hundred a month.
Okay.
Does that sound high? Where, where, where's your reaction like it though?
Twenty-five hundred a month?
Six grand a year.
Oh, there's more than that.
Yeah.
But then it says split income for airport, airport eighty percent city.
I'm hoping we can split it with the airport, at this point, they're pretty passionate about getting all the income, and I'm saying no.
Well, we're fixing the roof and then they call the income, does that make any sense?
That's why I'm saying, I've already told them no.
I.
Because we have to recoup that money back somehow, even if it's in chunks.
Right, no, I understand that. I'm not in favor of killing the airport commission, any of it for that matter.
Right.
Thirty, thirty thousand a year.
Uh-huh.
I said we have to keep it all till our roof's paid for.
Yeah.
Then maybe we talk about something later, but it'd only be, what, a year and a half and it'd be paid off.
Why did they wanna split it?
That's my idea to split it.
Why did they want it?
Oh, they all, they want it all to themselves, because it's their airport. They're very passionate about that out there.
Yeah, they are.
So, are we trying to decide here how much to?
How much to lease it for?
If they'll rent it for a ten year for twenty-five hundred dollars a month, I say make them the offer. I'll make the motion to make them the offer at twenty-five hundred dollars a month for a ten-year lease.
Okay.
It's like terms laid out, but the motion is we get the, our side of the income.
Okay.
Until the roof's paid off, and then I guess we get renegotiated.
Then we can discuss the negotiation.
Okay, that's what I wanted you guys to decide.
I'll second that, if you need a motion.
I got it, yep, thank you. Okay.
Discussion?
I think we're good.
Finale?
Yep, we're good. Now it is the Mission Square.
We're gonna move.
We gotta move.
Okay.
And the motion, two.
Lease the armory for twenty-five hundred for ten years, with a hundred percent of that coming to the city. Until the roof is paid for, yes, until the roof is paid for, then we'll renegotiate with the airport.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The hardest part's gonna be to split it with the airport. I can hardly tell.
And then they can pay.
And they can pay one percent of the roof.
Exactly. That's the other.
Or eighty, or eighty percent of the roof, whatever that, whatever they wanna do.
Okay. Next is Resolution nineteen. And this just gives me permission to sign off on some documents, we have one last person that has money in this Mission Square retirement. And they're trying to draw their money out, but Mission Square does not know who I am, so they just need.
Sign on it now?
Either Joan or Brady.
No one else can sign on it?
No, they were the only two ever on it. And Joan had money in it at one time, she no longer does. This comes down to an old city administrator, he's just trying to move it from one Mission Square account to another Mission Square account, but the city has to sign off.
So nobody in the city right now has, or deals with Mission Square?
No. It's not even anything we have in our benefits right now.
Alright.
Well, you need a motion for that, too?
Yep.
I guess I made a motion for Laura to be on that account so she gets switched over.
I'll second it.
Moved consecutively to, uh, approve Laura for administrator to Mission Square retirement plan?
Yes.
On paper?
Aye.
Close, okay.
Thank you. McClure sent us a document, they are waste treatment people. They had a contract in there that we, that just says we will use Sam Robinson, Samuel Ben, from ten thirty-six Coeys. It's a probably two-page document for you guys, it's got consulting agreement on it. Just says that we will use him for his consultant needs and since we haven't really talked to anybody else, this is just a document they start the process off with.
So what are the, just saying that we're gonna do the same?
Yes. There's no money, no dollar in this yet, no dollars to any part of this yet. This is still part of that, natural res- or ADA grant. But he has to have this so he can move forward.
I'm afraid promoting some new business with him on something else, but.
Yeah.
So do we need action on this then?
Yep, we need a motion and second.
I'll make the motion that we approve McClure as a consultant on the wastewater treatment plan.
Regarding informing residents of wastewater upgrades.
My second.
Moved consecutively to approve McClure's contract, on paper?
Aye.
Close.
Denial of state.
I got you. Board of adjustment meeting, this is just for your knowledge, it is, we are gonna have one on the twenty-ninth at seven-thirty in the morning. We've got one property that wants to extend their front porch, and they are grandfathered in, and so they're asking for a variance. The permit has been denied twice. So.
Was that through the planning and, or?
Planning and zoning, no, just board of adjustments, so it's like Pat Lee and Nathan Ham.
Yeah, okay.
J- uh, help me think of their names.
Mills, Jeff Mills?
Yes, Jeff Mills is on there.
And they've denied it twice already?
Cody has denied it twice, so now that the resident has asked for a variance, it goes to the board.
I hope it sticks out past their houses.
Well, they're going, they're, they would be going east and west, not toward the street. They'd be going even with the sidewalk.
But there's a ordinance in there, you can only have so much room between each house, too.
Yep, and they're the only house on the block. So like if you look down the street and they say it's not supposed to obstruct or come out past any other house on the block, they are the only ones on the block. So, they just won't, because it's bigger than the original footprint. It's all about that footprint, because they're closer than what they would be now, but they're grandfathered in. So they're trying to change.
Grandfathered in for what?
To be close, they're already close, but they just wanna go side to side, they don't wanna go closer.
To the road.
And they don't have a sidewalk.
Nice. Is there a place to build another house on this block?
I don't know that for sure, I would say, yeah. Cause it's like a four-unit block, they just own the one. And they just want that porch to line up with the house, instead of having that little, it's like a six-foot on each side.
I know, but it still doesn't matter, matters on the lot line, doesn't matter how many houses are there. They're, I don't know what part of town it's in, but in each part of the town is different.
It's over by the water tower.
Well, Cody denied it twice, there has to be a reason.
Yep, because they're making it bigger than the original footprint.
I understand that, but if it, the ordinance says so many feet from the lot line, that's what it's gotta be. Apparently it wants to be close to the lot line.
It sounds like they were allowed to, they, when they first built the house, it was out of ordinance. Cause that's what they're saying they forgot grandfathered it to.
How old's the house?
Nineteen oh four. I mean, it's been kept up, it's a nice house, they just wanna take the roof off what they have now that's covered and extend it to match the sides of the house and then recover it, so they can put heat and air out there. Cause right now it's just a screened-in porch.
It's already a porch?
Mm-hmm, it's already.
They're just looking at widening it, but I, I'd be interested to hear what, cause Cody denied it twice and in my opinion, there should have to be a reason for it, but.
There's, yeah, that's what I wanna know what the reason is.
It's something to do with the footprint, the original.
That's something we decide anyway, isn't it?
No, it's just an information, let us know what they're doing there.
Yeah. All right, your last couple pages here, this McMahon Stow Water Ludson Bucks Bus, Musky. This top number here is what we paid for Heritage Park. Ten forty-seven oh one, which we had residents come in that afternoon and give us ten for it, so.
So we had residents give us ten, so to pay for that?
Mm-hmm, they couldn't believe we were being charged. And then there's your quote to split the electric.
Is that, are they trying to be anonymous on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. That was the first thing they said.
It was also nice of them.
Yeah.
Very nice. And then it's time for another six-month review on me, if you wanna go with what we talked about before, when James was here. So you guys tell me when and how you wanna do it.
Next meeting, say, say when?
Close, are you gonna go close next?
Yep, I'll go close, so eight-four. That's our next meeting. It's my, it's just.
I'm trying when I have to go back over to read them. I think it's a week after that.
I would set it for that then, but if somebody can't be here, then I would push it to another one.
Yep, then it'd be the eighteen.
Okay.
Soon as I'm in.
Yep. Okay, down to reports.
Mr. Clerk? We updated our Itron, um, system for the meters. So, uh, Kasia and I were working on, um, getting more accurate with, um, our meters.
Six upgrades behind, now we can use an actual tablet. They can park on certain roads and it'll scan the whole block at a time. So instead of taking a day and app, it takes about forty-five minutes. No more using the handheld if we don't have to, there's some that have to be hand-wrapped, but.
It was just tested, the, um, the radio that we have.
Uh-huh.
Um, that was just tested using the app on the phone. And it does the entire block and you can choose which one you're checking, so it's even more efficient that way as well.
Yeah, Kellen put it on his phone, it's probably gonna be the electric guy's reading them. Cause that tablet is set up to go in their truck, so they'll just drive around, hit a button and then send it right back to your city home. So, saving us time. As far as me, I'm the administrator, most of it's on this back page. It mentions the Midstates Plumbing. The first paragraph here I know about, Heritage Park I told you about. I did round up that one CD, eight hundred and forty-five dollars to make it eighty thousand instead of seventy-nine and some odd change. We had a CD renewed at the library, but it did change banks, it went from Oki State to UBI. And then we've got a bigger CD coming up on the twenty-fourth, and I have the bids out there, I haven't heard back. And we're renewing everything for a year.
What's the, what was the UBI bid for that, twelve thousand five hundred?
Four point one oh. Everybody else was in the threes. And then just watch for the signage on highway four and three, it's gonna get a little interesting here these next few weeks. Go over your poor house. That's really all I have, Kasia's gonna be gone into this week. When are you going? August something?
Uh, twenty second.
So everybody's gonna take some vacation. Kasia's ninety days is in August, so hers will be unpaid, but it's been.
Jonathan, you have any?
Well, I guess back to the Heinz Center. What were we told, or what was the reason that they were dissolving the board, were we told that they were dissolving it, or?
I was told they were dissolving it based on health, that everybody's health was getting to where it was too much for them to try and maintain.
Don't like the idea they felt disrespected by us, cause I was under the impression that it was dissolved, they were dissolving, so I don't know where the.
That's, she called, Becky called and told me that, they were dissolving because of their health.
I was, sorry, I was just, uh, gonna bring up the same thing. Have we reached out to them since they had problems, has anybody talked to them?
No, I didn't know anything about it.
I was just, just shocked, everybody.
Yeah.
I didn't know anything about it.
Oh, if I can, if you guys will let me, I'll talk to them and see if, might not do any good, I'm just gonna talk to them.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, cause I don't
Please, I don't wanna upset.
Or, or we didn't know anything about, we were under the impression that they were resigning. Are they dissolving the board? We didn't know that they felt disrespected or
Right.
Yeah.
Anything of that nature, so this is all kind of.
The head person there was Carolyn?
Yes.
Okay.
So what is the status now of Heinz Center? As such?
There's nothing reserved until twenty twenty-eight. And so that's what they told me, this will be the best time for them to do it, because it wouldn't interrupt any of their reservations.
They made it sound like it was picking up the business.
Yeah, right.
So I.
They had maybe four or five graduations there, there were a couple Christmas parties there, because like somebody came and got the Santa Claus suit.
So if they got
Where's the zero key at?
We have it back, we got it back the next morning.
So if, uh, they have all the paint and everything, uh,
It's in the building.
Right, uh, if the guys don't have time to paint it, we need to find someone to keep it up.
Yeah.
We are gonna go.
I'll talk to her and I'll, and I'll get you guys to this meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we, we planned on power washing this side of it for sure, probably this side.
Cause I guess I was just taken a little bit off guard on this whole conversation, knowing this, if they would come back and have a conversation, be a little bit more prepared for what they were gonna say. See if there's some way to mend fences or figure out what's going on here, I would
I'll talk to them.
Be all for that, yeah.
I know them all but that Linda, Santa, is that how you pronounce it?
Yes, Santa.
Yeah, she was here, I just don't.
She's a nice lady.
I just don't personally, yeah.
I don't know her.
Other than that, like, the, uh, weekend celebrations, I think I saw more people in Pocahontas than I think I've ever seen in my life.
Are you sure?
Other than Ragtime, that was, I thought everything went really well, so
Good.
Hats off to everybody that was involved in that, cause I was impressed with the amount of people there, so.
We emptied the dumpsters at the fairgrounds twenty-three times.
It's the longest parade I ever sat in, so.
There was a long parade?
Oh, there was, we didn't have enough candy.
We ran out about middle main street.
I thought you were just being
Sixty dollars.
We had sixty dollars, we made it to the end of Co-op, but we didn't have much.
I really enjoyed the Poki movie, what they did.
I might go this weekend.
That's all for me.
Nicole, uh, let me understand, what relief are you looking for then in your comments that you just made?
Um, I was making, the, that, the lady down here, I'm not, I'm not aware of who it was, but, um, how she had turned to Google to look for an answer to her question, and that.
So your relief would be what?
Basically, we need a digital
Yeah, you need to update the website, I mean, a lot of people have like boxes, like Dropbox or Box or Google Drive or something, or they just have hyperlinks on their website that show the agendas, the minutes, you can go back as far back as you have them, um.
Updating the availability of the
Yeah, an electronic version that's more accessible.
All right. Any other questions?
No, I, me and Jonathan can talk about that.
I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah, got a motion.
Go live.
Sorry.